Unless there's any objection, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Thank you everyone. This is the December 3rd, 2020 Select Board Meeting. Excuse me via Zoom as per the Governor's orders of due to the COVID pandemic. I'm going to first order business, ask the Town Administrator to read the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we amend or approve the agenda, then a period of public comment. And then item number one is a consent agenda with a payroll warrant minutes from September 24th, 2020, October 1st, 2020, October 6th, 2020, October 8th, 2020, and October 22nd, 2020. Item three on the consent agenda is the meeting calendar. Next meeting, December 17th, 2020, and consideration of a draft meeting calendar for 2021. We can do that. We can do that later. Item two on the agenda is annual tax classification hearing with Wendy Lassie Assessor. Item three is COVID-19 team update. Number four, review of timeline and important dates, consideration of opening and closing the town warrant. Item five, Woodhaven-Leland Public Water Supply Report from Whitewater, Sean Colleen. Item six, consideration of administration items and routine business with Select Board member reports, Town Administrator Report, and Finance Director Report. Then adjourn to executive session under the following exemptions not to return to open session for item one, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if the Chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board and Town, and the Chair does so declare, to discuss the Town Library pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Sections 21A, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam 449 Massachusetts, 444, 2007. Item two is MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel interim police chief. And that is it.
All right, very good. Thank you. If any comments, motions relative to the agenda?
Move to approve.
All right, motion by Paul.
Second.
And second by Jeff. Okay, all in favor, as I see them. Jeff?
Hi.
Seeing where everyone is. George?
Hi.
Chuck? Was that an eye, Chuck?
It's a muted eye.
Okay. And Paul?
Hi.
And I might as well. All right, Diane, did we have any public comment tonight?
Muted, Diane.
I haven't had anybody tell me that they would like to have a public comment statement that they wanted to make.
All right, very good. And moving on then, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Any motions or comments relative to the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Do we want to discuss the calendar for 2021, or do we want to? I think that looked fine to me initially, but.
You can do it now or when you do the, under number four?
Okay. So I'll second Paul's motion then to approve.
Okay, with the ability to amend under item four. Okay, so all in favor. Jeff?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Chuck? Chuck, how do you vote? Am I just not hearing him?
He's hiding.
Chuck, I think your sound might be out just yet because I don't see a mute circle by you. But I see a lips reading, so I don't know if your microphone is out.
Can't hear you, Chuck.
Yeah, we can't hear you at all.
And you definitely, you're not muted because you don't have that little like, you know, microphone red line through it that everyone else has.
No, he's not muted. I think it's a Libby trick if you ask me.
I don't know if he wants to call in.
Could call in separately on his cellphone.
Oh, give me a thumbs up if you're, if you're a yes on this one, but, okay. But as we go on, I think we, we're gonna want to hear what you have to say throughout this meeting. And so I don't know if you want to work on that audio. And Paul, how do you vote on the consent agenda?
Aye.
Okay, okay, I might as well. Okay, that's very good. Okay, move on. Item number two, the annual tax classification hearing. Wendy Elessi, Alice, I'm sorry, screw that. I was going to speak in that, but before that, I have to make a kind of a motion on it. We're here tonight for annual tax classification hearing with the Select Board to discuss whether all five classes of property, that's residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal, shall be taxed at the same rate or at different rates for fiscal year 2021. During the meeting, both written oral statements from the public will be accepted and taken into consideration. With that, I'll turn it over to Wendy.
Good evening. Wendy Lassie, Director of Assessing. I do see that I have one of my board, new board members, Ben Williams, on with us tonight. I was expecting Bill Seymour. I'm not sure if he's in the waiting room.
Nobody's in the waiting room, Wendy. I'll look while you talk. I don't.
Okay, sure.
Waiting room, though.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be as brief as possible because I know you guys have a long night and I have good news to report, which is always nice. So as Eric said, the purpose of this meeting is for the Select Board to make a choice, make a decision whether or not to shift the tax burden over to commercial property, personal property. This is generally done in large communities, cities where they have a large commercial base or personal property base. This is not something Sherburne has always had a single tax rate because it doesn't make much sense not to. And it would just put a much larger burden on the commercial property owners. And, you know, we have a high, higher tax rate anyway. So the other determination that you'll need to make is to offer residential exemption. I say this every year, that would make sense in a community with a lot of rental property or a lot of second homes. And the other thing that you guys need to choose is if you want to offer a small commercial exemption, which again, in a community our size with a commercial base that we have does not make sense. It's never been done in Sherburne, but I have to give you those options and you can make a motion whether or not to decide to do any of those three things. So I'm just going to give you a quick overview of the year that we've had. And I want to start with our preliminary tax rate. And it should be certified either tomorrow or Monday is $19.63. It's up 17 cents from last year, from 1946. The average tax bill will be going up probably between 150, between 130 and $150. I'm saying this, and I need to make a, make a point. The average tax bill, there, there may be a property capes values have gone up, ranches values have gone up, some condos values have gone up. So with that increase, even with a $50,000 increase, that's almost $1,000 increase in a tax bill. So I just want to say that the average bill might be 100, you know, 30, 150, but there will be people, as there are every year, who see a much larger increase because they have an increase in their value and an increase in the tax rate. So that being said, I will move over to our growth number for this year, which was the second highest in about, I want to say 15 years. Our new growth number for this year in revenue tax dollars was 285,000. It brought in about $14 million in new growth value. Four million of that was personal property, which is actually high for personal property. 2.6 million of that was from N-Star. We probably won't get that next year. But I will say that the new growth number at 285, 285,000 this year will be similar, if not more, for next year because we will have almost all of Southfield on the tax rolls, 59 North Main Street. So we're going to be in in good shape next year as far as growth. I did a very quick synopsis for next year and I came up conservatively with probably about 15 million in new growth. So we could be close to 285 to over 300,000 next year. But one thing I do want to point out is that by being conservative and fiscally responsible, we have an excess levy capacity this year of $1.1 million. And that means statutorily, we could have taxed an additional 1 million, 1.1 million. But we did not go to our maximum levy capacity. So we have excess levy capacity, which is just healthier for the town. And so that was important in keeping that, the tax rate below the $20. Just a couple other points I wanted to make. There were 91 arms-length sales in 2019, the calendar year 2019. And this year so far, there's been 90 sales. 75 of them have been single-family homes and 15 of them have been condos. And the overall single-family increase value difference was 1.3. Condominiums was 18.1, and that's from all of the new construction. So a year and as predicted by our FUTR and advisory, our overall value increase this year was 1.9%. I had predicted a little bit lower and they were right on the money, so. So that's the conclusion. Do you guys have any questions or concerns or?
Just a comment. So all the years that I've been on the Select Board, I've always voted for a single tax rate because the commercial base is so small. I think you said in your report, it's like less than 5%.
Yeah.
You'd have the exact number handy. I was trying to look it up, but it's, it's such a small percentage that it, it doesn't make any economic sense that if we had more than one tax rate, the, the burden on the the little businesses that are trying to survive in Sherburne would be substantial, but the benefit to the average homeowner would be minimal.
Minimal, yeah. Yeah.
So for that reason, we've, I've, I've always voted for a single tax rate, so I'm prepared to, to do that again today based on the information that you provided in your report and the presentation you just made.
Okay. So Paul, I did find that number. So commercial, industrial, and personal property, right? It's four. It only makes up 4.37% of our overall value. So it would make, it really would hurt the small business owners and not really help the residents.
And I don't see why we would want to hurt the small businesses. They have enough difficulty as it is with this pandemic and all the shutdowns that are, or restrictions that are occurring, so.
Right.
I would like to make a motion, but let some discussion take place if anybody else has any questions.
I'd like to have George has to say.
Just, just wanted to point out that I'm happy to see, you know, and when we first started talking budgets last year, we were worried about approaching. I know at one point we were right at that $20 number. I'm happy to see that this is at 1963. I think that was by a lot of hard work from advisory and all the budget makers to keep it at this level. I'm very pleased with that. I am happy to see the continued new growth number be strong. I think that's an important piece to keeping our tax rate down. I think people need to remember that as we see new construction. It's going to help keep the tax rate below the $20 level. And that's, that's such an important piece that we, we need to remember. So anyway, I just wanted to commend again Advisor, I don't know how many of them are on here, but and Sharon and everybody who did the budgets last year, that, that to keep it at this level, it's, it's commendable.
It really is.
Absolutely, yeah. And just a point of conversation, I definitely support a flat tax rate. There's no question about that. Especially in other communities, look at Comprord Natick is flat and Framingham is, is adjusted. And once you, once you get that separation, you'll never get rid of it as well because you essentially get reliant on it. I definitely support, especially in the community for the reasons as already discussed. I think it's rather obvious.
Yes.
So then can I make?
Go Paul, do you want to make the motion? Go ahead.
Yep. I was going to make the motion that we approve a single tax rate. What's the factor of one?
One, yes.
Can I ask one just curiosity question? A point of information from Wendy.
Sure.
I've just, you've also talked about residential and other ones. I've just never seen that. Is that, is open space and industrial get taxed at different rates than other communities?
So, yes, so we don't have open space. We don't have class 200. That's like a Community Preservation Act, so they get taxed a little bit differently. So commercial, industrial, and personal property and chapter land would be getting taxed at the commercial rate. Yeah, so open space chapter, yes, yes.
Okay, all right. So I have a motion in a second. Take the vote as we go around. Jeff?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And Chuck, I think was dialing back in.
I've let him in twice. I don't see him now. He's hiding.
Having the sound issue. I think he's having the issue, he's dialing back in. I hate to bump him during the vote.
We can, we can wait. So one thing I'll.
We're gonna get the vote, but you know, you just think it's fair.
Absolutely.
Yep.
To allow to vote on something like this.
Yeah.
Damn.
He's a, he's texting me.
Okay. He texted me too and he said he was gonna call in. But then all of a sudden, I didn't realize he went missing.
Yeah, he asked me what the text and the call-in number is.
Yeah, I thought he could have done both. I thought he could have left his audio and somehow called in on his phone.
If he calls in on his phone and he pulls up the agenda and just clicks on launch meeting, it should pull up right on his cellphone.
Smartphone, yeah.
Yeah.
Minutes otherwise.
So when the language that you're using in this motion, I just, if you could just make it clear that you want to stay with a single rate and that you do not want to offer the residential and commercial exemption. And, and that's, that's really it.
To incorporate that as a friendly amendment to what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
But while we have a second, I do want to thank the finance team. This is a collaborative effort and we really worked together and to get this. And, and so I want to thank them as well and recognize them because they've been great.
What are your thoughts on 2022? Do you think this, you know, I keep hearing rumors that houses are going higher than asking. So you think evaluations will continue to climb even above?
I think so. Yeah, I think, I think that they will. I've, I've seen that they are. One thing that can always concerns an assessor or anyone in real estate is, you know, the bubble will burst.
Yeah, yeah.
And so as values either flatten or go down, the rate goes up. It's, it's just a.
Yeah.
So you know, I, I worry for that day, but for, for right now, we're, we're doing well and properties are definitely selling. Over asking, bidding wars, so.
There's very little inventory on the market, just a river market from being in real estate. And yes, that's been the lowest inventory ever this year. And the average price is actually, the average price of a single-family home this year is over 900,000, I think, so.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So Eric, I think Chuck is disguised as 826 down there in the lower part of the tree.
Chuck, can you hear me? Are you on?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can. Oh, very good. 826. There you go. So just, you know, I don't know how much you could hear or whatever. Paul made a motion to make a single tax rate with no residential exception. So that's commercial, residential, and all the others that we're talking about there, just one flat tax rate. It was seconded and it was so far voted yes by Jeff and George, and it's your turn to vote.
I vote aye.
Okay, aye. Paul, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Thank you guys very much. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ben and Bill.
Ben and Bill too, yes.
Is Bill here?
Yeah, he finally joined partway through, but I didn't want to interrupt.
Okay. So actually, while, while Ben and Bill are here, if you could just open the meeting.
May I unmute them?
Yes, please.
Sorry.
So because there's two of them on, they should just open their meeting for the tax classification and that they.
Yourself. Bill's unmuted. You have to unmute yourself now, Ben. There you go.
Bill, Bill moves to open our meeting.
Okay, and 10 seconds? And you, you duly agree with the Select Board of keeping a single rate and, and all of?
We do.
Okay, thank you very much.
We won't call it minutes for that meeting. We'll call it seconds for that meeting.
Seconds. Amy will love it.
Well, we need to approve our executive session minutes from a month or two ago, but
Right, exactly.
Maybe we'll do that another time.
Another time, another time. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, bye-bye. Have a good night. Thanks.
Okay, without further ado, Select Board here will be on to agenda item number three. That's the COVID-19 team update. I believe Zach was busy and I think this is with Daryl now. Daryl, don't dare. I didn't see you.
Hi.
Hi.
Just gonna let Zach do an update. Let me try and think. When, he's had a busy week, so I haven't been able to talk to him as much. If he had anything special. Oh, yes. So he's looking into getting more PPE because we've been burning through it faster than he might have projected before. Didn't get to ask, but I know that they do mutual aid work as well. And now that the requirements for PPE for first responders has been upped, it's just going more quickly. So who?
Gowns are.
Placing orders more.
Gowns are a big problem and he's ordered another 595. I talked to him at length on Tuesday.
Okay. Great. Okay, and then Sean, I don't know if you were going to mention about the HEPA filters that you've acquired.
John? Sure, I can. I wasn't gonna, but I will. So we ordered filters from the same vendor, the same filters that Pine Hill ordered for their classrooms to help assist in the areas that don't have excessive ventilation now that we're moving indoors, closing windows. So we ordered some for each building, a handful for Town Hall, some for Police Station, a couple for DPW Fire Station. Those I think are coming in this week and they're very, very good units. So they'll, they'll be stationed at Town Hall. They'll essentially be in each office that's occupied to add another level of filtration to, to help counteract of any viral loading if there is anyone in town that has the virus.
Okay, so, and I think library too was in there, right? Just in case anyone.
You're correct. Thank you.
From the libraries here. So I will mention though that the, both the COVID-19 work group and the Board of Health still want to remind folks that this is an add-on measure. It is not a substitute for what's already being done. And I know when this was first, this issue was brought up, somewhere there was the comment that why not do this if it could?
Testing, testing.
You're good.
Hi. We hear you. That why not do it if it could maybe reduce some pain to a family or something to that effect? But keep in mind, the best thing that we know about at this time for protecting folks is one, obviously to not congregate, but two is wearing masks. And so no one should interpret the presence of these air filters as being a substitute for wearing a mask. That's really important for people to recognize. That was one of the concerns by the group and the Board of Health that that it would erase the good behavior that's been going on and the, the protection that's been offered. So this is a marginal addition. It's, it's not a bad one. But again, the dynamics of the airflow and what's getting filtered or if you're in between where the virus particles are and the filter, you're going to get to breathe them as they're en route to the filter. So it, it just can't be relied upon and we can't stress that enough. So that's my reminder for everyone. And let's encourage everyone to wear their masks, including wearing them even in, we've talked about it. If people had a, an office of their own, they can be without a mask if they choose door closed. But even if there's no one else in the building, walking through the public spaces, people should be wearing their masks so as not to leave behind virus that's going to be suspended in the air potentially for days. So. Okay. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Wait one second. Daryl, did you want to talk about schools, particularly elementary school?
Uh, no, not really. There are lot longer, much longer discussions of that if people want to come to the Board of Health meetings, so.
But aren't they planning to go to in-person next week?
For fourth and fifth grade, yes.
Yeah, just so people are aware, I'm trying to discuss the basis of the decision, but so people are aware, they were going to a four-day-a-week program for all of Pine Hill.
Right. The K through three has already been on that for, since like the end of October, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's part of the phasing in.
Right, and I think they're hoping middle school, they'll look, middle school and high school, they'll look in January, I think, right?
It all depends on how things go, so.
Yeah, not great right now because I know my daughter's quarantining at home because she was exposed at school, so.
No, we're seeing about two cases a day recently in Sherburne, positive cases.
So how many are we up to now?
The total is I've lost track, 40.
39, isn't it?
Oh, no, no, we're in the 40s now.
We're in the 40s, yeah.
Yeah, whatever. We're in the mid, mid 40s roughly, so. I have it here, but I'm not going to find it in a second, so.
So if I could, I did want to thank Sean Colleen and, and Daryl and all those involved with getting those filtration devices for those various buildings. While they're not a substitute for a mask, everything we can do and anything we can do that would help reduce risk and exposure, I think we should, we should do. That would help reduce risk and exposure, I think we should, we should do. And this, I believe, is not expensive and not difficult. Didn't involve any construction and so on and so on. So I thank you all. I think it's right for us to care for our employees and those who. Help make the town run. And this is one way of showing that.
Very good. Any other questions in the board or any questions in the public? Okay.
All right. Good night, everyone.
Thank you very much. Okay. On the next, we have a review of timeline and important dates and consideration opening and closing of town warrant. Any background material? A timetable is laid out. David, who's kind of just taking the lead on this? Is this you?
Yeah, we usually. Look at the timeline. If it meets. I mean, what we're really focusing on is the closing of the warrant. That's what we need a vote on.
We want to vote on opening the warrant, David, not closing it, right?
No, I I usually tell you guys to open, to vote. The open date and the close date, so you don't have to go in and put in a new close date and do a vote later. Or or risk forgetting to. Vote it closed. So we usually do it at this time.
Yeah, if I could add to that, that the public needs to. Be able to plan. So they need to know. When they have to get something done by. If if somebody's going to submit a petition, for example, they need to know when. And so that's fair all the way around, that everybody knows upfront what the. The window of opportunity is. And I thought both days were good selections. They pretty much follow what we've done in the past. So opening it tonight is a good idea. It gives the month of December all the way to January seventh, which is the. The closing date. Very generous period of time. I would support that and ready to do a motion on that piece.
Any other comments on the board? Any comments in there? Okay, any motions relative to that? It looks like we have Chuck. We have a video on Chuck now. That's good.
Yeah, we do, I think.
Chuck, cough or say something? Is he frozen? Darn, I mean. Chuck, give some indication if you can. I guess he's trying to. He's probably frozen.
Yeah, I think he's frozen.
He dropped it. Again, I like him on the votes. I guess if we can't, we can't. Oh, there's another appearance of him. Hold on. Hey Chuck, who's blank blank page? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I don't think it's working.
Well, it's probably cavorting around downtown Paris in France, so maybe the connection isn't that good. I'm joking.
It is a thing of zoom. You can go on vacation and still contribute to these things, you know what I mean, so.
Absolutely.
Let's have a quick text. I'm sure everyone else is anyway, but.
Who just knows? I'd want to be on a select board meeting in Paris.
You're on the air right now and Eric would like to have your vote on the open and closing of the warrant. The opening date, can you hear me? Did you hear that, Eric?
I did hear that. Yeah, I'll take that as an aye. Well, I'll take that. Well, I'll take that. First, let's get a motion and a second.
I I did a motion.
Oh, you did? Okay, Chuck tonight, you're right. Sorry, I fell behind with the right there. Okay, I'll take Chuck as an aye. How about you, Jeff? George? Paul?
Aye.
I am aye as well. Do we want to talk anything about any select board meetings coming up or to set our schedule? Are we kind of good with kind of what's?
I think that schedule that was in our packet looked good for the year. I think I like to plan like that. I think it's good to have it every other week. Then everybody knows when we're having meetings and that all made sense to me.
Just to clarify, is it every other week versus twice, twice a month, correct?
Yeah, it kind of works out to the same.
Yeah, I mean, we have the off weeks for the search committee that.
The only the only thing I wanted to point out was in February, that does fall during the school vacation week, but I don't think anybody's going on vacation anywhere, so it really doesn't matter, so.
Yeah, good point. Frankly, something will, it's gonna be that or the police search committees. One of them is gonna fall on it. All right, okay. So I think that kind of ends that agenda item there as well.
Yeah, everything else is alternative.
Take this out to put on my refrigerator. I know what I'm doing. Okay, agenda item number five. Woodhaven Leland Farm Public Water Supply, report from Whitewater. Who's reporting on this? Is Sean?
Sean. Where's Panama, Jack?
I thought it was Smokey the Bear.
Silencing and everything. So you guys in your packet, I assume, not just a fat sheet, but you have. An engineering study. It's from Whitewater, but it's actually from their. Consultant Onsite Engineering, Inc. You'll recall in February. That was a long time ago, but we. It was approved to do a study on an interconnection between Woodhaven and Leland Farms for the water system. They share land. Actually, Leland Farms well is on Woodhaven's property. So I I don't want to get too much into the details unless people really want to, but basically what it did is led us down the path of some very. Clear conclusions and recommendations. From onsite and obviously. Whitewater has the same conclusion that the two systems probably should be combined. That was also at the urging of DEP more than a year ago. So we're basically at the point now and it and it's it's been basically stalled a little bit because of COVID. It took a little a little while to get. Some of the data to them and some time for them, everybody to get back up and running earlier this year, but. We're at the point now where we should. Start to proceed with some of this. The next logical part in the path is is to have the consultant start working with DEP. And working towards getting the permit, finalizing the design. And going through the permitting, because that's when you'll get clarity of of the final issues. Of exactly what needs to be done and any more testing that needs to be done. So what I'm asking for is. An eventual motion of of approximately twenty thousand dollars or up to twenty thousand dollars to spend with Whitewater, the consultant, to do exactly that. And then with the intent that this this spring's town meeting, we're probably coming with a warrant article. And leading up to that, we'll discuss how that gets paid for, the finances. And the future finances, but it it's important that we keep moving on this because the uncertainty right now. Is there's some uncertainty for Woodhaven for the future, but there certainly is some uncertainty. Right now for Leland, probably longer than there should have been. But we we bought some time with DEP. And and the the issues, but there's a, you know, there's a financial uncertainty which is which is troubling for many. Including myself, for for Leland especially. Is there any questions on the actual engineering that anyone has?
Sean, why don't you remind us of what the Whitewater's current estimate is for the total project? If if I recall from the materials, a hundred and eighty thousand.
So, yeah, and there's two, so there's two different things in there. And they and they. They did a decent job separating that. And if nothing else, it helps me touch on it. The. There's two, there's a permit, which they're calling the the WS thirty-three permitting, which is basically. In layman's terms, the combining of the two systems. Woodhaven has a very good system. They have three wells that they utilize. They really only use two, but. They're all interconnected. And then and then a pre-treatment. They spent a lot of money on a generator and and the and the tanks and everything else. Leland has its own. Off of one well. So this would be the physical combining of the two. As well as the the permitting to do that. And the operation of it. And the, you know, there's there's many benefits of it. So that's one aspect of that. And then the second half of it. The other approximately forty thousand. Is corrosion control treatment for lead and copper. So what that hits on is exactly what DEP. Prior to this study was throwing at Leland Farms. They have basically an enforcement order that they have to do this. It's it's still up in the air, whether or not anyone will have to do it. If we do the combined system. It it may come just under the threshold. The bottom line is, and the key takeaway here is. If we combine the system, we only ever need one. If we do nothing, Leland alone would have had to do the forty thousand dollar treatment, and that would do nothing for Woodhaven. And it could happen that the very next year, Woodhaven would have to put in a forty thousand dollar system identical to Leland's, and neither would help each other. So financially, you can see that there's a benefit right there. If we get into the engineering and BEP puts, you know, basically says, listen, it's safer. You have to do this. We will only ever buy the one system and operate one rather than two right next to each other. That doesn't benefit each other. It doesn't add any resiliency at all. So. Yeah, the estimated cost at this stage, again, it's it's not totally engineered out is a hundred and eighty. And that's with public bidding if if the town does no work at all. And that's also if we do the treatment. So forty of that again is the treatment that that may or may not be needed yet.
And the corrosion corrosion controls to raise the pH, right?
What's that?
The corrosion controls to raise the pH. For the lead and copper, I'm pretty sure.
In layman's terms, yeah.
Just so people know, this interesting thing is that in Flint, Michigan, the water supply is not contaminated with lead. They just did not have the ability to raise the pH of the treatment, so the lead within the pipes was actually poisoning the people. It actually had to do with the. The distribution system had nothing to do with the water supply itself. It had to do with the treatment and inability to raise the pH at the actual. Treatment plant itself. And that's a very similar thing that we're looking at here. So that's why they request such a things here. And that's why MWA's pH is something like nine or ten or something like that, when they when they do it for all the old urban pipes that distributes to. Anyways, I definitely support this. I also support combining wells. I think it makes more sense. I think it is more redundancy. Both in flow and in water quality. I think a blended water supply, you know, unless you have weird weird stuff in your water, unless you have like high iron one wear and low pH somewhere else. Usually makes sense and a lot of things like that. I'm assuming they're accommodating for such things like that. Only technical question I had was one comment in here. They recommended further reduction of. Of what do you call it? De-icing materials on on Village Way. I guess Sean, are you prepared to further execute that or look at other? De-icing materials for that road?
I am, and we are working on that. I mean, we we're working on on that throughout downtown. With de-icing, we. We do take special care. We're probably gonna. Raise the level awareness in that neighborhood. I only actually control the de-icing on one of three properties there. Abbey's private. And Leland is being held controlled by a contractor as well at the time. But the wells are, the, sorry, the surface water flows off the asphalt towards those wells now. What I don't have the ability to do is truck the snow out of there. As one would imagine, when you start hauling snow, you need a DEP approved place to put it. So putting it at the highway garage next to the wetlands isn't really gonna fly either, so. We just need to reduce the the level. We need to reduce the level through downtown because that's not the only well that's affected. All the downtown wells are affected by decades of. Of salt usage.
So there was. Maybe twenty years ago. A committee the town formed. To look into the use of salt on our roads and they came up with a plan and a. Recommendation. And there was a whole series of things that the Board of Selectmen voted to implement so that. The use of salt in the downtown area would be, was supposed to have been greatly diminished. Through following the results of that committee. I don't know whether you've seen that or whether we're still following it or we're not following it. But a lot of work was spent on trying to figure out. How to. Because things are so packed in the downtown area between septic systems and wells and roads and. Buildings and so on. There really is a need to preserve the wells and the wells are already have sodium chloride in it. Which is salt. That's just the name for salt. So there was work done. There was reports. Put together, there was recommendations that were adopted by the select board at the time.
There is a policy that, you know, we've we've we have, but it's. It's not like it sets a standard that we have to follow. It it basically sets a. A limit so that you have to continually test. And if you're, if the limit, if you hit that limit. Then you have to take the measures that are in that policy. As far as I know, we haven't had. Tests that hit the limit that's in that policy, but we'll we'll pull it out again.
So I I know the policy well. I also live in the middle of that district and I and I I've read it. It's quite dated. Most of the materials now that you can use to supplement. The sodium chlorides didn't exist when that was done, so we're 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 doing extensive work on that. But the fact is, twenty-six thousand cars a day. Drive through downtown Sherburne, and unless we want significant crashes and public safety issues. We gotta plow and salt the road, so we do the best we can. We follow the, what we can on that and. We're. We're addressing it as best we can.
And I'll say what I was looking for in Village Way, because I fully recognize that the the traffic in. In downtown is a completely different scenario, but Village Way is not. And I do respect there is an elderly population. I want to maintain safe from them, but I'm thinking of things. So small that even with the increased costs, like increased use of magnesium mag chloride. Or some of these molasses compounds we're looking at or experimenting with things like that. It's just, that's some of the things I like to kind of look at. We have three zone ones, all overlapping. All Village Way. And even maybe pressure some of the contractors on Leland Farms to do the same thing there. You know, I think given that. Leland Farms is still ultimately somehow controlled by the town in some indirect fashion. We could kind of pressure them to do that, especially if we found something successful. For treatment. That's what I was looking at. Downtown, I feel like you're John. That is like a major hub route. There's only so much you can do there. And that is a. You know, unfortunate. Unfortunate situation there, but I'd like to see something innovative tried tried in Village Way. That was a point of my initial question.
And my answer, my answer actually, Eric, is that we're doing that throughout. Because what happened, what works in Woodhaven is gonna work on North Main Street. So we're doing exactly what you just said, with mag chloride in in molasses pre-treatment, and you're gonna see that this winter.
So I remember one of the points made by this committee at one of the select board meetings. Was about intersections. And they were saying a salt truck comes through one way. And puts salt everywhere but in the intersection. And when it comes the other way, it puts more salt on that intersection. And every time it goes through that intersection, more salt on that intersection. So you could have all these roads with one. One coat, one delivery of salt, but the intersections are getting eight, nine, ten times. That dosage because the trucks keep going through. So the idea was to turn off the trucks as they went through the intersections and turn them back on. After they went through the intersections. So I remember, I don't remember which DPW director that was, but. I remember those kinds of things being discussed, I mean, the simple mechanical kinds of things. That significantly reduced the salt load. At intersection, so like Village Way and and Main Street would be an intersection that would just get too. Salted because of the fact it was an intersection.
All right, I think it'd be up to enough. It was just a side note on the first bullet. I think we got the point. All right, I think it'd be up enough. I, is this a side note on the first bullet? I think we got the point. Is there any other questions about the, the water supply in Leland Farms and Woodhaven?
Oh, I think this is a no brainer. I think we should go to, go to.
So was it volunt transfer up to twenty thousand dollars to assist with engineering studies or?
So move.
Transfer from where? Transfer from where?
I got a clarification.
Was it looking for the reserve fund? Is that what we're looking for?
No, I wasn't even looking. I, I was thinking late in the year, I might ask for a reserve fund. I was actually just looking for the the support. I'll use DPW funds at the moment. Which might, which might leave me short and I'll come back for a reserve fund. But it's more than just that. It's really the authority to start working with DEP and, and Whitewater to, to pursue this. Knowing that it's gonna, it's gonna cost upwards of two, twenty thousand dollars.
Quick question on this. I know that since it's a DEP public water supply, the Board of Health involvement is minimal. Do they, do our public, do our water commissioners get involved with this at all? Do they have any involvement with this?
The water commissioners?
Yeah.
I don't believe they do.
Yeah. I don't even know. I should know.
I don't think he's been involved in the Woodhaven or any of the testing with Leland.
Yeah.
Not, not that we, we couldn't or shouldn't consult them.
Joe Meany's on here. He, he would certainly know. Do you want Joe to?
I mean, if he wants to speak up.
Joe, do you want?
There's a handful of people here. There's Claire with Woodhaven, of course Kitty Sturgis is here.
Yeah.
Probably knows more than anyone on the call for Leland.
I don't make a huge discussion though, just more a point like, you know, consult a commissioner is necessary. Like I'm almost sure the Board of Health is more informational. I don't think they have any um, purview over uh, public water supply. That's why it gets a number. It actually is under the state. The state assigns a, a, a person. The person is like, you know, the regulator on it. But I thought the commissioners might have some responsibility for the town. That's why I think officially a town rep or something like that. Not, it'll be fine. We can look into it. I don't think it, it needs a, right now, just, I don't think it needs any decisions right now with that. So is it a vote or just like, you know, ISO certainly support utilizing DP funds, DPW funds to um, to go further this. Do you have a vote or just consensus?
I'd like a vote.
We will have to look. I, I think reserve fund, I don't know Sharon, it's probably only, what is it at now? Like a hundred fifty thousand dollars or some?
He's not asking for a, uh, transfer.
Well, I know, but if we authorize the work, we have to be aware what the reserve fund will allow in this fiscal year. It's not, we don't have the funds in the reserve fund, I believe, to fund this whole project.
Sean, you're saying it's only twenty thousand though?
Yeah, he's just talking about the engineering, Jeff, not the, not the whole hundred and eighty for the project. And I don't think we have used too much of the reserve fund yet, Sharon, have we? Not this year.
Not, yeah.
No.
No.
We haven't touched it yet this year, Jeff.
We have, you're right.
Okay.
And then again, I'm not convinced I need the twenty, I, I need the twenty thousand dollars reserve. That's why I didn't want to tie this up in a, you know, an advisory meeting in this meeting.
Yep.
All right.
Rather get a little further into the budget before I ask for that.
So is there a motion relative to this?
I moved to, to authorize DPW to spend the money necessary for the study to combine the systems at Wood, Woodhaven and Leland Farm.
He goes, a second, Chuck?
Yep, second.
No, I didn't recognize. First I heard your voice. All right, we have a motion and a second. Um, I'll go around the table here. Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, George?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
Uh, Chuck?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you very much, Sean.
Thanks, Jess.
Thanks, Sean.
All right, and stuff is everywhere here. About that, I think the next is the reports, correct? I lost my agenda.
Yes.
Next is the reports. All right, any uh, first is the town administrator or? I'm lost without my agenda.
I think finance director goes first.
It actually says select board member according to agenda I have found there.
That's right.
Any select board member reports?
Just a point of information that I had sent to uh, the town administrator that there's going to be a new statute on police, so police reform statute. They're talking about the, a system where a police officer can't serve unless he's certified by the state, and the state can decertify the officer, at which point he can't be a police officer anymore. So this, some big changes coming. It's supposed to pass this week. We're gonna have to assess what this does for the town, how to uh, how to make it work for everybody.
Okay.
Governor Baker is going to uh, veto it or try to uh, get it amended.
Okay, that's good to know. Uh, any other select board member reports? How about town administrator reports?
I don't have much to report, other than we are busy with some HR items. Some some records requests um, that we, we did get through and um, we are, uh, we have the front of the building. I think you've seen that, the construction started. So, um, that's all I have for your report.
Can't miss that. All right, um, how about you Sharon? Any CFO reports?
A couple of things. Um, we are preparing for our FY twenty twenty annual audit, and this year it's going to be virtual. All the data in advance and sending it electronically, and it, it's going very well. People are really cooperating, working hard, greatly appreciated. Um, and also, as you know, we're preparing for the most wonderful time of the year, budget season. Um, I've been working with Batar to customize our budget worksheets even further. Uh, we'll be able to provide a three-year average. We'll be able to do comparisons of um, prior year budgets. And um, we've made great progress. Uh, we have all the sheets now. Um, my plan is to get everything out by tomorrow. Um, and um, as the guidance from advisory states, we want everything back in the finance office by December thirty-first. The other thing I've been busy working with the COVID nineteen team on is um, the CARES Act reimbursement. And as you're aware, Sherburne was allotted three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven twenty-six. Um, and together with the team, we have submitted projections from March through December. And based on the projections we provided, we have actually received three hundred and forty-five thousand, eight forty-seven to cover um, what we're projecting. Um, the reporting is very detailed. Um, reimbursement expenditures are clearly defined. And I totally, or the, the team totally will be spending the entire allotment. I mean, as you heard today with the, the addition of the filters and PPE, I'm sure we will bridge that gap and, and, and spend the entire amount, so. That's, that's been a tremendous help financially that we've been able to pull all that out of our operating budget. And then the last um, item that I'm really excited about is um, we have rolled out um, remote access to Batar, our financial system. And the, uh, the first thing we've done is all of our department heads are now actually entering their own expenses directly into Batar, which is really streamlined the process and eliminated double, double work. Um, and all the department heads have been really cooperative and it's been very, very successful. Um, now the department heads do have access to um, all of their financial information in Batar historically and um, it, it's been, it's been very good, so it's you know, this, it's amazing what we've been able to accomplish, you know, given everybody's working remotely and um, I just wanna say thank you to all the department heads for all their hard work, helping us pull this off. And that's it.
Thank you, Sharon. Any questions? Okay.
I'll ask a quick one, Eric. Sharon, that includes the Pine Hill laptops. We ended up adding them in, right?
Yes, I have. Yes, it does include them.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, my, my representative from uh, the CARES Act has been really helpful, really helpful.
Good. Okay, if that's not it, um, I was gonna call the open meeting to a close and uh, enter executive session.
You need to read.
You need help, David, or you got it?
Oh, he needs to read and vote.
Yep. I'm screening my thing, yeah. So I, I don't boot anyone, because technically I have to read this in open session.
Right.
So item one, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on a litigating position of the select board in the town, if the chair um, does so declare, and the chair does declare, to discuss the town library pursuant to MGL thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A three and seven Suffolk Construction Law versus DCAM four-four-nine, Mass. four-four-four, two thousand and seven, and item two, MGL chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A subsection two, discuss the strategy in sessions in preparation with negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the interim fire chief, uh, police chief, I'm sorry, interim police chief. I need a second and roll call vote. Okay, all in favor? Um, Jeff?
Hi.
Um, George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Chuck?
Hi.
I am I as well. Okay, so first one is the library.